Have a second on the motion. You have a second on the motion to start?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay. Everybody's comfortable with working with just a quorum tonight?
Yeah.
I don't, uh, Jay said that he wasn't gonna make it. And I don't know about everybody else, but we'll see. Okay. Alright. Okay. Um, why don't we just quickly do the minutes? Laurel sent them out a while ago. Hopefully people had a chance to look at them. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns about the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November meeting.
Okay. Any, any, uh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Looks like Laurel might have a question.
Yes.
Her, her, um, audio isn't working.
If your audio switch, have you crossed it out? Look at it. Make sure it's not crossed out.
Help Laurel.
Oh, Bob and Mary Lou are trying to get in. But they didn't, um, let me, I'm re, I'm resending them everything I sent to you earlier, Kathy.
Oh, thank you.
Bob.
Maybe that should go out to everybody every meeting.
Yeah, I know. I, it got messed up this month, but I totally agree. It should be resented.
Can you hear us, Laurel? Nigel, if you can hear us, okay. Can't hear you now.
Okay. They should be signing on soon. I just sent them everything.
Okay, so we moved to a second and about the minutes.
I think Jan did.
Minutes. Okay, uh, in favor, is that, Nan, hi Nancy. Uh, so Nancy, uh, we'll go around Nancy, uh, how do you vote on the minutes? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, Laurel, yes or no? On the minutes? Yes. Jan?
Yes.
Okay, and Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, hi Rob.
Hi. When you sent the, the link for Zoomly,
Yeah.
there's like a blue line under it.
Yeah.
And it was only halfway across the whole link, so it didn't work. I, I don't know why, why that happened, but it happens occasionally.
Alright, sorry.
That is strange. I should have resented to everybody. I'm sorry about that, too.
Well, you're, you're, you're forgiven. You, you've been through some tough times this past week, so.
I mean, it's a quick email, but thank you.
If you cut, if you copy and paste that link, that's what I had to do into your browser, it, it worked.
Okay.
Cause mine did the same thing. If I clicked on it, I only got half of it. So if you copy and paste it, that's the only way I got it to work, too.
Okay.
I don't know why I did that.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
Mary Lou, I just changed your name, so you're all set.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let me just get my, let me just get my, alright, I'm sorry. I just, I've been trying to get on and, yeah, yeah, alright.
Alright, so, uh, at, uh, at, at, at Kathy's request, we're gonna start with the budget. Uh, because, so as long as, as long as we've got everybody that's here, before we lose anybody, we'll start on the budget.
Alright, I'm gonna share the screen.
Thank you, uh, Darcy for sending all that stuff out.
Yes, of course. Is this the right? Trying to find. Sorry, I'm trying to share the screen. My computer's being scared about it.
Hi Laurel. Okay.
Alright. My computer is not sharing. Oh, there we go. Hold on, I figured.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Alright. Okay, bye. Okay. Yes. Yeah. Okay.
Hey. Got it.
Very good. There we go.
Bye. That was Laurel. Her computer crashed, so she's gone.
Oh.
Okay, so anyway.
Well, we need someone to take the minutes.
I'll do, I'll take care of the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright.
But do you want to explain this, uh, Darcy?
Okay, yeah, I was just waiting for everybody to be settled. Um, alright. So here is what I have for the general, um, budget lines, what I came up with. It's a three point one two increase, but in, I hope if you read my cover letter, you saw that, um, everything was actually fully explained. Um, so for example, for staff wages, um, what happened was, I think there was, well, Bergen was hired at a higher rate than, um, then actually advertised. I think there was a, an error in there somewhere, so she was hired at the higher rate, which makes her, um, higher than Sue salary wise, so I evened them out. So Sue, it has.
So we're certainly not responsible for that. That wasn't an error on the library's part.
Yeah, no, I think that was just a thing that happened, um.
Yeah.
But so I, I put them at an equal amount, which I feel like that's what they should be. That's what we should, um, that should be our standard. Um, because not only do we want to, like, we have these two hired people, but we also want to keep them both. So, um, hopefully that, that makes sense, um. And then with the part-time wages, it's at three percent because there was that strange, um, half the year is fourteen twenty-five, half the year is fifteen, and then it's gonna go up to about fifteen thirty. So it came out at three percent, even though I gave them a two percent increase from what they're going up to January first. So that way they get on our schedule, because we don't know when there'll be another minimum wage increase. I think fifteen dollars was the goal. So that's, that's what I did for that. Um, my library materials, that's the calculated number, um, the previous year's nineteen percent. So it came out at a five percent, but it's mass general law. Um, so the other things, the other things I did decrease just to try to get that, um, that percentage down a bit. I know, I mean, I, I know that not everybody might agree with it, but I'd love to hear some input. Um, cause I know it can be kind of a touchy subject, but that is the, that's about what, um, our MVLC dues are actually going to be next year. It doesn't include the e-content, but the e-content will come out of library materials, and sometimes it does anyway. Um, and it counts as materials because it circulates to everybody in the, in the Commonwealth. And then the, um, the training I just decreased to two thousand because to be honest, we don't use it quite as often, and a lot of our trainings these days are are free and online. Um, and people, we're all taking tho, those opportunities to do that. But I, I've seen people prefer it because of the, the reimbursement process. So I just decreased it just a tiny bit. I mean, it's there so that we can use it, and if someone, there's enough for a conference, if a conference happens. But.
Where is the ALA this, this year? Do you know, Darcy?
Oh, gosh. I know it was, it seems to circulate between Chicago and Washington DC like the most. Um, and I know they changed midwinter to something else, and they just, that, that's somewhere else, and they always have those in the more offbeat places. Um, I don't know off the top of my head where it's going to be this year.
That's okay.
Or this coming year in June.
So, but that even, I mean, hotels, transportation, meals.
I know. I mean, it'll, it'll cover a good part of what would.
Wouldn't would have state aid to, uh,
Yeah, yeah. Supplies, and the cost of everything has risen so much, I, I do agree about supplies. I know, I, I do agree about supplies. I mean, if, if you believe that we should go for an increased number, I don't mind putting that forth. Um, because I do agree, every, the price of everything has gone up. We, like, Demco's shipping is ridiculously expensive, too. Um,
Thank you.
So.
I, I think, I don't know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but, I mean, if all you can do on that line is, is two percent, I think you need to make some kind of an adjustment. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Adjust it to, uh, I, a two percent.
Something more than level funding it.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't mind adjusting supplies to two percent. Let me see if I can actually
Can you hear?
change that.
Okay. Yeah.
Let me see. Oh. Happens if I hopefully you're seeing me type this in and kind of
Yes.
do a, a guesstimate. So forty-five hundred would be a two percent.
Yeah, how does everybody else feel? I mean,
Well, I mean, we don't have to explain it away. It is only two percent.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah, that is not a heck of a lot of money.
Yeah.
No.
And I do agree, the pri, price of supplies has gone up. I think I've already exhausted our supplies budget, to be honest, because book covering materials and ink has eaten it up.
Well, then maybe we need to, to look at higher than two percent. I mean, I can't under, I, I can't imagine that anybody would question that that lives in the real world.
Uh, this year we haven't even used the forty-four hundred. We, we were just under by about, I think, six hundred dollars. So if someone might ask, well, how much have you actually spent this year?
No, let me see. I think.
I thought Darcy just said we used it up, well, we used it up this year already.
Well, according to my, sorry, I'm trying to find it on my and Zoom is getting in the way. Nope, not that. Sorry, I need to.
Take your time.
Alright. Sorry, the share screen was covering what I'm looking for. The.
But you know, uh, Laurel is listening in on my speakerphone, so.
Oh, good. Hi Laurel.
Hi Laurel. Um, okay, so I don't think that's quite an up-to-date number, to be honest, because there are things I'm submitting to, um, to, to Ellen next week, that'll that, that number is gonna be gone. I can promise you that.
That, that, that line item will be completely depleted after the next.
Pretty much, pretty much. We're down to, from my calculation, we're down to maybe like fourteen, fifteen dollars.
Realistically, we have to have enough to run the library.
Yeah. Yeah. So let me get back to what I was sharing.
So from Laurel's information, we have here Nancy Hurley, Robert Downey, Jen Dempsey, Kathy Prunier, Mary Lou, and Darcy, and me.
Thank you, Lee.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Right.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, so.
And we're sure about the decrease in the dues line.
Yeah, so.
The MVLC.
So the dues line, um, if we included e-content, it would actually look like it's increased by sixteen percent. So that is, we're about nineteen thousand four hundred something, so I upped it to something that we know is manageable, nineteen fif, five hundred. Um, so that is the dues, but the, the e-content is, um, about three thousand something, and that would, if I included that, it would look like a sixteen percent increase. I, um, I, I've tried it both ways, but I do think it's also helpful for us to have that for materials itself. I mean, like granted, we would be able to use it as materials on the financial report anyway. But we know that line is being spent that way. So.
Darcy, did you take the e-content out last budget?
Um.
In materials? I'm trying to remember.
I, you know what? I.
Because if, if you didn't do it that way, I, I would recommend maybe an explanation under details.
I, so what I did was last year I put more of an estimate based on the previous year.
Okay.
Um, well, that, that, that's what happened. Um, I think I did do the, trying to think, I think I, the e-content in, increased. So there was an increase in that. And.
But we're not showing the incre, maybe something in the details would show.
I'm just thi, thinking that, um, that, you know, when you see that uh, a line item goes down,
Hmm.
um, but it really didn't go down?
Not technically, I mean.
Right, so I, I just to clear up questions maybe from the get-go, which just makes sense to put in that, um, the, the rest of the, the membership dues that have to do with e-content or in the materials line item, for clarity, it's actually clearer that way because you don't have to speak to it.
You want that up along the line?
You know, that the dues include some library materials and, but that's on a different line item. I don't know, think about it. I just think it might be a little clearer.
Yeah, what I'm writing now, this spreadsheet, isn't what we're turning in anyway. This is all,
Yeah, okay.
It gets translated to ClearGov, so this is kind of a a rough note, so that I can include that. But that's a good point. Um, and Patty did say, you know, make sure you know the, the e-content is going to increase for fiscal year twenty-four, so I was prepared for that. Um, but yeah, that would be over three thousand dollars more, or, yeah.
I guess, I think that's very important to explain that to them.
That is definitely the wrong.
I hate to see a minus six in the training line. I really do. I think we may not get, but we need to put it in that we have a, a large and vibrant staff and training is available. We, we assess everything that is no cost, but there are some things that cost, and we would need to.
Do you want me to level fund it? Or at least?
That makes sense.
At least. At least, yeah.
Okay. That is there.
But.
Still not so bad. It's a three point one nine, which is a.
No.
Yeah, I, I, I think when you, when you look at this, uh, the impact is salaries and mandated lib, library materials. I mean, that's where all the increases coming from.
Which you know, all makes sense.
And on the, uh, the staff wages, uh, that increased fifty-six hundred, and that's because we were making the two positions salary equitable?
Yeah, so both full-time positions will be the same amount. Yes.
And, and that's a, a gift, because Sue's been here for, if I remember, six years. And she's gonna be making some, the same amount in a lateral, the, uh, an employee in a lateral position was hired for the same amount. That's, uh,
Yeah, well, I'll say that due to that mistake Bergen is currently making a bit more than Sue, so I, it's, it, it, it got a little complicated there, but I totally, I hear what you're saying.
I mean, Darcy already knows this. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Darcy already knows this, because I've already spoken to her about this. I just don't understand and don't think it's fair for somebody who's worked for six years in a full-time position and done a very good job to, to be making the same amount of sal, just equal amount of salary with somebody who just came in. It doesn't seem right to me. It doesn't seem right. It seems to me that, that Sue should be making more than Bergen. Under any circumstances, she should be making more, and it makes no, it, it just is not fair. I, I, from, from her point of view, it is not fair. And if I was working in a position like that, and I could see that happening, I think I'd be looking to go someplace else. I really do. And i, it's just, I, I, I think to be there six years and then have somebody come in the door and be making the same amount of money as you, I mean, I mean, it's, at this point, she's making more than her. It is not, it, it, there's something wrong with that. And, and, and we need to do something to, to make it so that there's some kind of an entry position. And you go up from there, but the, the person who comes in is at an entry position. So the, the person who's been there for six years is gonna be making more than that person. I, I don't see the, I just don't see it. I, I, I think it's not fair.
I agree, and, and we were guaranteed, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mary Lou, go on.
I'm done, and I mean, I've had this discussion with Darcy already, so she knows how we feel about it.
No, I completely agree, and I do think it's been skewed for a while. I mean, um, because at one point, you know, I was hired before Sue was the Youth Services Librarian with an MLS, but then Sue got hired after me and was making more than me. So it's been kind of skewed weird for a while. Um, but we need, we do need to try and fix it. I totally, I completely agree with you. Um, and um, I don't know.
Well, don't forget, we're faced with the, with the situation where we need to hire talent. And, uh, you have to pay, and sometimes it's inequitable. But over the fullness of time, when we do, if we do real staff evaluations, uh, we'll be doing Sue and Bergen's evaluation, and that's where it's gonna hit. Maybe we'll say one of them gets four percent, and one gets two percent the next year. But, uh, you know, it, it's tough. It's, uh, we're, we're all brought up in the rage of, you know, time and service determines what you get for salary. And I think we're, we're getting away from that.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Let me ask a question. Is Sue, is Sue aware of this?
Hmm, I haven't, you know, it's not something we discuss.
But it's all public knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, obviously this is being recorded. Um, it's public knowledge, but.
But anybody can find out. We can look at the town report every year and see what people are making, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
But we, we have to have a story to tell. Why are we paying Bergen more or the same as, uh, Sue?
It was an error made outside of the library.
Yeah, it was originally gonna be twenty forty-seven, and the error, um, ended up, it ended up being twenty-one forty-seven. So, um, it's just slightly more, but it is still more. And, um, I do agree about the talent thing. Like, there are many, many sides to this. I do agree about the talent thing, because we were darn lucky to get someone as dynamic as Bergen for what we advertised the price. Um, but I also agree about the longevity, so it's, it's, it's a tough one.
Well, I, I think that, um, i, if we did have each position on a step system,
Mm-hmm.
so when you hired, you know, people would come in at the, at the first step. And then each year they would go to the next step, the next step, the next step.
Yeah.
That would make it easier for you.
The town would have to agree to that.
Right, I, but what I'm saying is, some of the positions should come in at a higher rate, no matter what, than others. Obviously.
Yeah, and.
So, so there's, there's a couple things, you know, like, I, if they get the information from that salary survey, um, that might help us to kind of talk with the powers that be about, about this type of situation, because as you said, Darcy, it's, it's multifaceted.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's about, um, coming in at the right rate for what the job you're doing, plus being able to move up in a step system for the low time that you've, um, you know, your longevity. So it's like two different things going on. So I, I don't think every, every position should, um, automatically start out at the same rate. I don't think that,
No.
that's good either, so there's a lot to think about, you know?
I'm assuming?
What's that?
They're operating under the same job description?
No, because Bergen is a, is a department head. I mean, she's heading the children's.
She's the department head.
They're both department heads. They're both.
But they're not, but they don't have the same job description.
No, like they do different things, but they're the same thing for the, each department.
Right, right.
So Bob's right there. It's just not the same description. That's.
Right, right, but I mean.
Now, we were guaranteed, we were absolutely guaranteed that, put it on hold, don't approach town meeting for any increases, because the Edward Collins Municipal Study Committee will get those numbers back, and then we'll know what we're going to pay. Well, at one point, it was said that the numbers were back, the report was back, and then it, it has been across the board, it's not back yet. And I've checked with three different people to make sure. And so there's none of that. Um, whether it's back or not, we have no way to know.
One thing we did get back was our new job descriptions. Sorry, I did interrupt you, but we, we got our job descriptions from them. That was one part. Um, so that might have been a mix-up there from what was back, um, just possibly.
Can I make an observation about the salary thing? Um, the time will come when we have to replace Sue and/or Bergen. And we, our past history has indicated to us that if we offer a lower salary, we're gonna have harder time getting people.
That's why we lose people. They come for a couple of months, get a little training under their belt, and then move on to a higher salary. That's been going on for years.
Oh, and do you wanna, do you wanna aggravate that by saying, so when you come here, your first year, even, even though you may have had ten years' experience someplace else, it's your first year here, so you're gonna start lower than, than the other?
Right, right, that's, that's my whole point. You know, if you do have a step system, uh, you, you have a standard wage for each position, and, and you actually have to, uh, uh, increase that with a COLA every year. You know, the, the starting rate that somebody would start. That starting rate.
I think what Lee is saying, if they have a lot more experience, why do they have to start out at step one?
No, but.
I don't think they necessarily do.
They don't necessarily, but it gives you some guidance.
Step system, you can, you can say, well, this person has had, you know, ten, maybe six years' experience, we'll give you five and put you on step five or. Step system, you can, you can say, well, this person has had, you know, ten, maybe six years experience, we'll give you five and put you on step five or step.
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah.
Why, why do we need a step system to say that?
So it's been writing for the future.
Well, it, it makes it less arbitrary. I mean, what, what we're doing now, I, that's why I think it's really key that we get that data.
Yeah.
About the salary survey, it's really key because this problem's gonna keep reoccurring. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, we're gonna just talk about it every year and, well, they were. Great last year. I, I will be honest. They gave us. Every increase we did ask for. At first, they weren't able to, the override situation was complicated, but then they did.
Right.
In all the staff wages and part-time wages lines, everything we asked for, those six percents, those nine percents. We did get and, but I know it's so hard because. We're a municipality and we, it doesn't look like much, but they really did. Do that. Um, but I know it's still gonna be a fight every year, or at least, uh, we really need to advocate for it.
We need to advocate for it and we need, need to make sure that there are no more, nobody, no department has more staff hired until we can. Pay a decent wage to the staff we have already. They had a, at, the program, the other night, they had terrible, um, it was, the sound was terrible on the selectmen's meeting, but they had, uh, people that they had. Do a study and they're recommending we hire professional assessors and we hire, uh, an assistant for the town administrator. And we hire and we hire and, and it's, no, let's take care of the staff we have.
Hmm.
But at any rate, that's all not gonna work for us now. Uh. I think the way, we can't even call these COLAs. I mean, it's utterly ridiculous, two percent. Increases, it's nothing compared to what's happening in the world. Guess we're all supposed to be very grateful to be able to work in Groveland. Well. People work to take care of their families and themselves and, uh, we're not anywhere near. Not anywhere near it. So that being said, I'm done.
Maybe what, what, it seems like the inclination would be that when we do next year's budget. Part of what we should be doing in that budget is establishing a pay step system, some kind of. Make sure that, that we put it somewhere, I don't know, s- somewhere in the process, I don't know where it would go. That this is the way it's gonna, the pay's gonna work.
Probably in the director's report, I would think.
Does that make sense to you, Darcy?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it does.
All right, so we'll, we'll do that for next, for our budget. I mean, let's get this settled down because it's gotta be done.
Right.
Yeah, let's do these numbers and then the cover letter, hopefully.
You're satisfied with the two percent for yourself, Darcy?
Yeah, yeah, especially if it helps the other staff. That's.
Hey.
Um, that's what I'm more concerned about.
Okay, Laurel has a question. Go ahead, Laurel.
Is, is Bergen getting a two percent raise as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Bergen is at two, Sue is at four. Everybody else is at two.
What's that? Say that again? Oh, but she's making it more, I, she's making it more equitable per Sue by giving a four percent increase to Sue. Yeah.
Yeah, it's to make them equitable. Exactly.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Darcy, next step?
Okay, so I don't know if we need to. Um, approve the numbers and then talk about the cover letter or everything together. What would you all prefer?
Let's approve this first, vote on this first and then do the cover letter.
Okay, so can all of you see the changes that I made?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And technology at zero percent increase is fine. Is that right?
Yeah, those are level funded technology and programs and those are usually. Not problem areas.
Okay. All right, any other questions? So do I have a, a motion to accept the budget as presented by Darcy? Hello?
I make the motion.
Okay, Laurel motions. A second?
I'll second.
Again for Rob. Any further discussion on the budget? Okay, uh, we'll do a, the voice count since we're doing it this way. Uh, Nancy?
I vote to approve.
Uh, Rob?
Aye.
Ian?
Yes.
Kathy Brunier?
No.
No? Okay. Mary Lou?
Yes.
Uh, Darcy? Oh, not Darcy. Laurel? Okay, and a, a yes from Laurel, a yes from me. All right, um. That's, that's why you voted no? You just wanna move on?
Uh, no, I, I just, I'm not in agreement with the training line item. I'm not in agreement with the supplies item. That's not. Two percent isn't anywhere near what they need. Uh, not in an agreement with the whole thing.
I can see where you're coming from.
I just don't see what we can do about it at this point. I mean, just, I wish we could do something about it. We could. It'd be nice.
Yeah, they did. That's fine. Okay, uh, so next step, uh, Darcy?
Okay, so the cover letter. Can you all see the cover letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so it, I promise you it's not gonna be on black paper. It's just the way my computer works. I have it set on dark mode.
Happy, happy Halloween.
I know. Okay, so, um. I tried to explain line by line, which everyone's were increased by more than two percent, why they were. And that's usually, that's what happens every year. Um, so did anyone spot anything that needed to be changed there?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, for example, like on mission statement, uh. You know, in the write-up from the town, uh, they emphasize a statement of goals. And they, they go community development, public safety and all that. I think this is the place where we should certainly throw in some examples. Because the people that are gonna be reading this at the town don't have a clue what will be done for programming.
Well, the mission statement is set. That's, that was set and voted on by a number of.
No, no, I understand that, but, uh, how do we, what do we do to meet the, the mission statement this year?
Well, that would be in your annual. Report, right?
Yep. And I have, I've submitted the report information for fiscal year twenty-two and we achieved some great things, so. Um. I, I can, if there are any ideas about changing or adding goals. I can do that for sure. Um, I wanted to focus more on, you know, because. Every time I talk to anyone who is, who's not really a library person, they'll say, oh, the, there's still libraries? So I wanted to focus more on, you know, we are, we've, we've been moving into the twenty-first century. We are becoming more, you know. We're becoming tech savvy. We are, we have tech savvy people on staff and also tech reliant people on staff. And that means we can provide more for patrons because we understand it and we also want to be able to fund it, so. That is kind of why I included this because I think it's something I wanna focus on more in the coming years and even maybe. Put more of it in the next, um, long-range plan. Um. And then I also think that a, a goal about reaching out to. The more vulnerable populations, children and seniors, that's something we're focusing on even more now than ever. I think with the numbers that we're getting for our programming, um. I think, you know, Bergen has been making great connections. Sue has had great connections for the past seven years. Where I think that we can do even more. So that's, that's why I made, I put those goals. Um.
The, the reason I mentioned it, when Leah and I attended the, the finance, uh, meeting last year. Uh, we mentioned, uh, that we, we were on the website. And no one in finance or no one, you know, the, the town was aware that we even had a lot of site, you know, part of the, the package. And we were very interested in that. So what I'm saying is, you know, all this we've written here sounds nice. But it's not gonna grab their attention or, uh, give them any warm and fun, fuzzy feeling about what we do.
Well, I, I will say, I put, um, the website stuff in our annual report. Because in fiscal year twenty-two, we got our brand-new website and we are directly connected. To the town on that website. You scroll down to the end of the town's page, there is a link to, right to our site. It has library, um, fire, water sewer. We each have a different little logo and you click on it.
I don't think the website is the easiest website to use, the town website.
It's, it, it does take some getting used to. I mean, I, I.
I didn't, I didn't mention it to bring up the website. I just used it as an example of giving something to tick off the teeth then.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I will give, um, Rebecca credit. We are more front-facing now than we've ever been, I think. Um, but. So, I mean, I can include a goal about increasing our visibility just in general. Um.
What about the things we've done? We've had so many.
I, I was, I was just looking at the letter with Bobby said, I think maybe a, you're, a good paragraph. About what some of the things you just talked about, so, that, that we've done this year. And then, then after that, it says, when reading through our budget, one will find some of the numbers will cost our budget to exceed, you know, but I mean, it.
Oh, like put it in the top.
What?
Like put it in the top of the cover letter.
But you, I, I'm talking about being more specific about the things.
Yeah.
But, well, the, the place that that historically goes is on the town report.
Yeah.
The annual town report is where that usually goes.
Yeah, but do they look at that in conjunction with. How much.
Sorry, you all heard me yell for my husband. Okay.
Yeah.
I heard the doorbell ring and I don't think he heard it from that end of the house.
I mean, I can't predict whether they look at that or not. What I can say is that. Well, I don't know if it'll come out right, like, I don't know exactly when twenty-two's report will come out. I know that it's going to look slightly flashier and different than previous year, so maybe there. Our logo is gonna be on the page and everything, so I don't know if, um. It's, um, maybe they will flip through it and see, but I did, I did include the. Of a lot of our achievements. That we, and we did have some really good ones in fiscal year twenty-two and I, I even included a little bit from, from this year, because why not? Um. I, I do.
We can always pass out a separate handout at town meeting. That's very possible. Other departments do it at times. A separate handout.
Groups do it.
That flashes our goals, our, our accomplishments.
Yeah.
Well, I have a different take on it. Uh, we're submitting, submitting this budget. And we, we've got the numbers, but they're just numbers. But if we give them something to back it up, this is with the budget you approved. This is what we were able to do.
Right, didn't we have goals for last year that, that we submitted in our budget, right, Darcy?
We did.
Was there, um, some specific, I don't have them in front of me, I'm sorry, but just wondering if. They never ask you to, to report back on what you've done with the previous year's goals?
Not so far, but I am happy to prepare an answer for that for our meeting with them.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I'm happy to do any of that.
I mean, don't be afraid to, to toot the library's horn.
Oh, no, we've, we're honestly, we're, we're a great department. I.
No, no, I know, but, but I hear, I hear what Bob's saying, you know, it, it's discouraging when you hear people don't even know we have a website. I mean, seriously, you know, I mean.
It's more discouraging to hear that people don't even know libraries still exist.
Well, if, if people don't care about, um, education and learning, uh, we don't have much of a future as a country, so.
No, we don't.
I think that, um, you know, we, we've gotta keep working really hard to, uh, get the word out about what we offer.
Yeah, yes, I.
Every chance we get.
Yep.
I agree, and I think we've gotten, we've, we've gotten more patrons, um. A lot recently. We actually, I think I mentioned this last year, but we, we make a lot of new library cards. Um, and it's not just people moving to town. It's people who have lived here forever, so it's. Um, it is happening. People are. Um, coming back to us more. So, yeah, um, but.
Maybe that's a statistic you could put in the cover letter. How many library cards there are in the community?
Yeah, um, we have that information on the Eris, so I'm happy to. Um. Let me just put a placeholder here. Um, cover letters. Library cards. And it's, it's true, it's most of the population, it's not even just. It's like a slight amount. It's, it is most of the seven thousand, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to say about the cover letter?
I have one thing. Are we talking about the cover letter yet?
That's, yeah, that's what we're talking.
Right, so I'm, I'm reading the line, uh, it's very good, but I want, I'm reading the line, we're advocating for our own budget with this document. We know that we would be able to continue to strengthen our relationship with the town with the budget presented. Our goal is not to strengthen our relationship with the town. Our goal is to strengthen our services to the patrons of the library and to the citizens of the town. And I think even if it means respectfully disagreeing. Then, uh, there, there, be, be it. And I understand where that's coming from. I just think that, um, I don't, it, we're here for the patrons. We're here for the, for the citizens of the town, but not so much, just, we don't go along to get along and I don't wanna give that impression.
Yeah, so I could say what I just put is. Um, we'll be able to continue to strengthen our relationship with the citizens of Groveland and our patrons. With the budget.
I think that's, that's much better. Yeah.
I agree. That sounds better.
Yeah.
Anything else? Just, I had a question. Did we kinda give up on the idea of trying to extend the library's hours? Are we gonna do that? Are we gonna wait till another year when things are less crazy?
I, um, kind of talked a little bit about, um. That, a, a tiny, tiny bit about that in my meeting with Rebecca and Ellen. I didn't really mention specifics, but, um. I. Do think that things are going to be crazy again this year. Not that we shouldn't do it and it is in our, um, it is in our strategic plan, but I. I'm thinking, oh, sorry, I. Thinking of maybe asking for it next year, of like having a big, big presentation.
With, with correspondence from patrons.
Yeah. Yeah.
Advocating for it and requesting it and asking for it.
Yeah, and that's the thing, we can work on it over the next year.
And perhaps planning a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, uh, with patrons and advocates for that, uh, to speak.
Yep.
That's not a bad idea.
All right, so for everybody with, remember me into the future, remember, we're going to talk about this next time.
We're going to talk about it before next, before next December, way before.
Okay.
Way before, yeah, not two days before Christmas, way before.
Else on the cover letter?
Ken, I'm trying to move the cover letter down a little bit, Darcy, and I can't seem to do that.
That's me.
Thank you, yep.
Yeah, let me know if you need me to pause. I put these.
Darcy, I, I would just make one suggestion in the beginning.
Yeah.
Just um maybe to start with a positive sentence rather than a negative one about the difficulties.
Yeah.
Something, something like Bob and said. Yeah, something about how the past year has brought some, some great achievements and, and maybe just write a couple of them down.
Great challenges and great achievements.
Yeah, so it's not just the negative of the struggle.
It's but great challenges.
You can figure out the best way to put it, but that's just a suggestion.
No, that's a, that's a great suggestion. I
Yeah, it, under very difficult fiscal restraints, but
Yeah, but I do agree, we, we have achieved a lot and we should, we should definitely. You should flaunt it.
Okay, so Kathy, you wanted to look at the rest of the letter?
If we could.
Okay, I mean, sorry, I keep accidentally scrolling down and
So this, this we call, remind, remember, this is for the, the town administrator and the finance committee. And so that's the window that we're looking at this letter with. Budget we had presented slightly, every increase is reasonable and necessary. You know what? Do we need to put in, we are grateful to the citizens of Grove and Finance Board, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator for listening to our needs. That's their job. I don't think we need to be grateful for it. That's the job of the finance committee.
I can take that out.
Yeah, that, we, we don't need to be grateful for it. This is a business relationship and it's their duty and responsibility, not the citizens, but finance board, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator.
It's never bad to be kind of gracious.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I think that's a gracious statement that I think goes a long way.
It is a gracious statement. I'm not terribly gracious.
I, I do agree that it's their job, but maybe it'll
Yep, that's fine.
strengthen our relationship with them and, you know, and trying to build bridges these past few years.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a good thing. Good, leave it in.
And it's kind of like my, my stepfather, uh, would always, when we would go on trips, he would say, why, why are you nice to the toll takers? It's their job. You don't have to be nice to them. No, you don't have to be, but it doesn't hurt either.
They should be nice to everybody.
So there's the mission statement. That's pretty, pretty standard.
That's, that, that stands.
Yep, and then I put the two goals, the technology one and uh, reach the outreach one. I do think there is more that we could do with our.
About on the first one that we change it from, uh, we provide technology appointments for patrons, but we would like to, but we need to expand our technology resources.
Ah, but we need to. Okay.
Darcy, I, I just had one other idea. Just a suggestion. I would personally like to see that you do mention literacy, regular literacy.
Okay, in a goal?
Well, I mean, it, when I read that first goal, it makes it, I get the impression that we're kind of behind. And yet, we've been our goal for literacy for the entire town and, and educational resources, whether they're in electronic or print, has always been paramount. So it, I don't know, I just get the feeling like, oh, the, yeah, the library's really old fashioned, but um, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna start doing more with technology. But basically, when we look at our mission, it really is literacy, right? Information and materials. So I, I would just somehow weave that in. That um, you know, you want to do more with technology, but you also want to uh, continue, you know, like with the early childhood things that you're doing and teens and helping people with homework. I don't know if you can somehow just weave that in as a continuing goal. Yeah, because re- reading is
Not a bad idea.
Really big.
Yeah, and I can put that first and then
Right, I mean, if you can't read, you're not, you're going to have trouble your whole life.
Yeah.
What's that?
Librarian there, Jen.
I'm sorry. Hey, Lee, you made a great Santa Claus, I meant to tell you. No, really did a great job the other night.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that was a great suggestion. Very helpful too. Like I said, I needed help with this. Especially with, you know, I've had COVID and then bronchitis brain or whatever. So it's, it, this is very helpful.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad we could meet tonight because it gives you a little more time before it's due. You know what I mean? Because you, you need the extra time.
Yeah, we can work on it for the next, tomorrow and the next week. I think that's a great suggestion. I will make sure I do a good one in there.
Anybody else have any other comments or suggestions, concerns? Okay. Um, so, uh, we, do you want, are, are you concerned about voting to approve this without seeing the, the complete changes? Or do you trust Darcy to make the changes that we've asked for?
I think it'd be made with, a, a motion can be made with the, the amendments.
I agree. Do I have that motion?
I make the motion.
Second from Jan. All right, any further discussion about the cover letter or uh, accepting it with amendments? Okay, so we'll do the roll call again. Um, Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, Rob?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Laurel? Uh, yes from Laurel, yes from me. Okay, so you had a, okay.
Good job, a lot of work, Darcy, and a good job.
Thank you. You were all very helpful as well. I appreciate it.
Don't get sick again.
I'm going to try not to. I'm going to try really hard.
Okay, all right, so Darcy, if you want to, I mean, not Darcy, Kathy, if you want to see to your guests, we'll understand. We're going to move on.
That's all right, I can hang in for a little while. Bob's entertaining them till about seven thirty.
Juggling or what?
What?
Bob juggling for them or what?
Serving cocktails.
I cannot picture him juggling.
A bunch of people want to come over to your house now, Kathy. Okay, so, uh, rest of the director's report then.
Okay, um. So as per usual, I include this, included the statistics. They're pretty on par with what they usually are. So are there any questions about the circulation statistics at all?
No, they're excellent though.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, they are, they're really good. And then what's also really good is our programming numbers.
Yeah, amazing.
Yeah, so Bergen, like I said, she came in, she picked, she picked up the children's programming and she's been running, basically just, I, I keep telling her, you know, let's plan this so that you don't get burned out because we, we, we need you. So she's been doing great, her crafter noons, um, and we, we didn't really have anything for that age for a very long time. To have twenty-seven to thirty-two people, it's fantastic. And I will mention this now, even though I'm going to mention it next month also. Lee came as Santa Claus to the library. We had ninety-one people for that. And so that, that number is going to be in the next report, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Lee for that and also for hooking us up with his sister Kathy. Because um she did a really great program. We collaborated with Nichols Village on it and we had a good number for that. And I think we're going to start collaborating with them on a more maybe monthly basis for art programming. They've, they've really taken an interest in that, so.
They have a beautiful facility.
Yeah. Um, so you can see the, the programming numbers there. They are great.
Wonderful.
They're even better this month, so you will see that.
It is unbelievable. You know, that at some point really has to be, I think that's where Bob comes in with his opinion that we really need to put those numbers out there. People need to know that this is, this is how many people in this town, uh, appreciate the library and the programs.
I won't be surprised if when I admit these, put these numbers into the heiress, they say your numbers are so different than last year. What's going on? Because sometimes that, that happens.
No, they think they're inflated, but they're not, yeah.
Yeah, I will, you know, obviously, there's, there's always an opportunity to give an, an explanation and a note, but um yeah, we've been having a lot of success.
Wonderful.
But I think like, like, you know Bergen has so much experience from her previous teaching background. She has the masters in early education. You, you know, she knows what to do, which is just like, is so intuitive that I, I, I am super impressed. And of course, these numbers are always fantastic, so.
Yes.
We are very lucky. Yeah.
Darcy?
Yes.
Is there, is there any way we could do for, for all these program numbers? We can do a year to date, you know, running total?
Oh, a year to date? Um, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, because it would be nice if we do a year end report or calendar year or fiscal year report. We say, oh, this was the total for the whole year and that number I think will be mind blowing when you look at it.
Do you want a month by month or, or and a total? Because then you can see
If you want to do a calendar year, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can make that happen and send that to you.
Yeah, here's an example too, Darcy, where you, you really are using technology because you have so much hybrid program, programming as well. You know, without the tech, without the library using technology, you wouldn't have be able to reach as many people as you're reaching.
Yes.
We wouldn't be able to put three hundred and fifty-six people.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Isn't really old fashioned. I mean, you're already doing so much with technology.
We really are. Um, we are one of the few libraries that actually will actively have hybrid programming. I think so many libraries have started, they've been in talks about it for months, but you know, we've been going with it for a long time now, for months, and it's been a very good thing for us.
Definitely.
And and of course accessibility, that is, that's a huge thing that's in our, um, our strategic plan. And I think that's helped immensely.
I guess that's the one thing we can thank COVID for, for us, everybody.
For making us more accessible. Oh goodness, and also increasing our numbers. Um, museum passes pretty on par with November. I think we're going to have more in December because of school vacation week.
Right.
Can Bob Downey make his usual statement? I think it's important that at least once a year we meet in person. Outdoors maybe in the summer when it's, uh, there's no issue.
Yeah, in the summer, definitely. I mean,
Yep.
Maybe July's a good time. Let's see, warrants, I will read the warrants. So twenty-three nineteen is a total of four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents. And then twenty-three twenty-one was five thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and twelve cents and the total was six thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Any questions about that? I think a lot of that was Ingram.
Right.
Okay. So personnel, as you know, Gianna has left. We um are actually finishing up the search for the page. We have a volunteer. Um, a high school student named Eva that we've, um, that, that I've offered it to, so. Yeah, so if all goes to plan, she should be appointed January third, I believe, and start the sixth. So, um, obviously everyone will be keep, kept updated with that. So under other, I have a few things. Um, I don't know if you want to talk about the money first or the there, everybody's sick issue. Let's see. Maybe we could talk about the money and get that out of the way first because it's pretty standard. Um, so we received a renewal notice from Asabet. Asabet is our calendar, our museum passes. It's pretty much how everybody gets our information these days. Um, and it their renewal is fifteen hundred dollars. And it's that time of year, so.
I make a motion to approve fifteen hundred dollars from the state aid fund to pay for the As- Asabet.
I'll second.
Second from Laurel. All right, uh, any other discussion about that? Okay, so fifteen hundred dollars for the Asabet. Okay, uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
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 Laurel? Yes from Laurel and yes from me. Okay.
Thank you. And I sent an email earlier with two more because those bills came in after I sent this report to everybody last week. So I got the bills for renewing Wowberry, which has all of our new items. And our copier um, our copier contract. So those are also, every winter we renew those. Um, Wowberry is three seventy-five, always the standard. The century copier specialist is four seventy-eight and it's always around that amount, so I I don't know the exact amount it was last year, but those are both things that we renew every year.
Want to take, take it as a, a separate motions? I make a motion definitely to approve Wildberry.
I know you love Wildberry.
I do love Wildberry. Uh, and the amount of, what did you say, three seven, three twenty-five?
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five, uh, from Three seventy-five, uh, from State Aid.
Second?
Second.
A second from Mary Lou, alright, uh, any other discussion? Okay, then uh, uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, Robert?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Yes, and a yes for me, okay, and the other one, how much, Darcy?
It was four seventy-eight, and I'll say about the copying, um, contract is we do take advantage of it, I know it's something we don't hear about very often, but um, it covers our ink and any service calls we use, which I, I had it serviced a couple weeks ago because it was having issues, so, um, you know, we didn't get any extra billing for that, and so the um, the copy contract does, does cover all that.
And we did go through one time some years back, when we didn't have a contract and some of the repair visits were two, three, four hundred dollars, so this pays for itself in one visit. I make a motion to pay for the copier contract out of state aid, the amount of four seventy-eight. Or they're about up to five hundred dollars, cause you didn't have the exact amount, right, Darcy?
It, it is four seventy-eight.
Okay, then the, the motion goes with four seventy-eight.
Second?
Second.
Mary Lou, any, okay, any further discussion? Okay, and we'll vote, uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
And a yes for me, okay, so unanimous, okay. Alright, anything else, Darcy?
Okay, so under other, I have, um, something, so so Kathy and I were talking about this, there is a lot of sickness going around, and um, we kind of talked about possibly taking these stants as a library that we recommend, not require, cause obviously we're not the Board of Health, but we kind of recommend the use of masks again, it, cause it really can't hurt to try to prevent some of that sickness from going around, obviously people will do what they do, but, um, it's more of like a you know, this is the library stance thing, but what does everybody think?
A strong suggestion, yes.
Yeah, I know, I know, you feel very, very strongly about it.
And we still have the hand sanitizer near the door and
Yeah, and having been
I think it's important that we have young children coming into the library.
Yeah.
I do too, there's more sickness than ever before, it's worse than last year, so I think a strong suggestion that it would be a good thing for everyone, staff and patrons and volunteers.
Maybe hit the curb on this, I, I wouldn't be surprised if the, if the town hall moves that way, and if we're ahead of them, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think we are too, I'm, do we need a motion on that, Lee?
Foster, director's policy, so, I think
More, not a policy really, but like, you know, making sure that we're kind of a united front on it.
Yes.
You know, putting it on the signage, I can put the banner at the top of the website. Um, you know, and just kind of make sure that people know that there is a lot going around, and we want people to stay healthy.
Okay. Vote, but does anybody else have any, anything to add to the discussion? Okay, good, so you've got our support there, Darcy.
Yes, nice.
You wanna vote on it, Darcy, or are you good with just?
Um. I, I, I wouldn't say no to a vote, but I also don't think it's required, so.
Okay, well, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen, I mean, yeah, the Board of Trustees, uh, advocate for the Library Director to post a sign requesting patrons, uh, for the good of everyone, patrons, staff, volunteers, to please consider wearing a mask, uh, when coming into the library.
So are we requesting now or recommending?
Well. I think recommending.
Okay.
I think recommending is
Yeah, I think requesting
More likely option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was surprised today going to the eye doctor that, um, they don't require you to wear a mask, because all along, any health facility, you had to wear a mask. And now they're not.
In October, I had to wear a mask to the eye doctor, oh my goodness.
My ophthalmologist still insists.
They lifted that, I was really surprised.
Wow. I wear it going into a restaurant, I wear it going, I don't go into restaurants anymore, but going into a grocery, anywhere I have to go, I wear a mask.
I think people that wanna wear a mask would never be discouraged of wearing one anywhere.
Right, exactly, but this is just kind of a reminder to people who haven't thought of it, you know?
Yeah.
Second?
We have a
I have a question, what about people who would like to wear a mask coming into the library, but don't happen to have one, do we have any that we can give them?
We do.
Oh, good.
We do, and if we don't, the Board of Health does have some.
Okay, good, I mean, that would be the thing, you know, you have some available, if somebody would say, well, gee, I wear one, but I don't happen to have
No, I, I, the Board of Health has, and the library still has some leftover from
Yeah, good, alright, that's perfect.
Moved and seconded, I think it'd be, it'd be very helpful to, if, if anybody's confronts you about it, Darcy, you can say, well, the board hopefully unanimously said that they want, that they approved it, so.
Yeah.
It's not a mandate, it's a recommendation.
A recommendation, right, yeah.
Discussion? Alright, we'll take the vote then, uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, and a yes for me, okay, good, anything else, Darcy?
It's all I have. That's totally it.
So, uh
Oh, you need a, you need something to soothe your throat a little bit, Darcy.
I need some water, I'll tell, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, and you need to get to bed.
Uh, so Mary Lou sent us out the, the report, uh, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Yeah, um, just, you've got the report, and the, I got this mysterious envelope one day, when I went into the library with my name written on it, I had no idea what it was, well, it turns out that it's the, it's, I, I think that it's the, was the first of the monthly reports that we had asked for from Bartholomew, that will go into the file in the library, the whole thing, which is the first that I give you, that's what that was, Darcy. It's so interesting.
Still nothing from Van Gogh, Mary Lou?
No, and I can't get in touch with them, there's no
If you need, if you need me to help with that, like after Christmas, I'm not doing it tomorrow, but if you need me to help with that, I would be more than glad to.
I, there's no, I have, I have looked at every inch of print on that document, and there's nothing on there that would let you you know, anything electronic or a telephone number, to get in touch with them, it's like, it's, it, I don't know how you get in touch with Kathy, but maybe we can figure it out, I'm, I mean
Absolutely, we'll work together on it, that's fine, I'd be glad to help you with it, Mary Lou.
Besides me, I can't figure out how to do it, I've tried.
I'd be glad to help you with it.
Yeah, but anyway, so
We'll get together the week after, the week after that.
It has my name on it, it says, um, for the account of Lengley Adams Public Library, care of Mary Lou Costello, with treasurer, with the library's address on it, but it's sent to the attention of Michelle Beegan at the town hall. So, she's probably gonna receive me, and then the envelope is gonna come, you know, to the yeah, I think I might, after Christmas, I might give her a, a phone call and say
Yeah, we did request that she forward those to us, but it hasn't happened, so let's work on it after, the week after New Year, the first week of January.
She forwarded this one, so, but the thing is, I could go pick them up too, you know, if it's easier
Well, I think we need to, to streamline that a little bit.
Because it seems like they're gonna be sent to her, you know, that's
And she's very nice to work with, she just may have forgotten.
And so I'll, I'll give her a call and see, but that's what the mysterious envelope was anyway, Darcy.
We might, might be, do better to maybe send her an email, because then it's there, and
Yeah.
But I, I'll also call Van Gogh, I, a couple of, uh, accounts, so, yeah, good.
So if you have any, I mean, it's just a number, so we can, you know, get in touch with them, and I did send you a copy of this thing, I don't think it applies to us, but I keep getting them now every week, this, um, the Bartholomew Weekly Update of Short-Term Treasury Rates.
Well, that's the, that's because the treasury percentages are changing so rapidly.
Yeah.
They send that out, they're encouraging that, although, uh, the I-bonds, and I think we need to talk about that at a, at a future meeting in the Treasury's report, the I-bonds are paying nine point ever, eight, seven percent, so that might be a, a wise choice for some of the funds.
Yeah, so that's, I sent you these, and I, I get one every week, I haven't sent you the one every week, but just This is available, just so everybody knows, and I'm keeping the copies of it, so we have it.
But
And we can talk to, maybe we can talk to, um, Brian Jamros about it at some point, and, you know.
Yeah.
Like you say, the I-bonds, we'll have to, you know, we'll talk to him at some point, so that, that's all I have.
Yeah.
Alright.
Mary Lou, Kathy, do you think it would be advisable to send Bartholomew an email asking, would they recommend I-bonds at this point in time?
I can, I, I can talk to Brian Jamros, I mean, I can, he, he's wonderful.
I think it's a, it's a good idea, I mean, it's a, it's something, I, I'm not sure that it's open to our type of, I've done it for my grandchildren, and it was when, you know, the nine point ever, eight, seven percent, would put stars in my eyes, so, um, but we have to look at it, we have to look at it, it's available for what we're, we're doing, and, and it's, it's, it's a good idea, it's a good idea, Bob, to, uh, to look at it.
So I, um, I, I can, um
Sooner rather than later.
I'll call, I mean, this is not a good time to call anybody, cause, you know, it probably, like, right after the New Year is probably the best time to, to, to do this, and I, I would wait
Exactly.
Yeah, cause I think, now, between now and New Year's, people aren't really on, you know, I mean, they're, they take a lot of time off and stuff, so I think I'd wait till then, but I can ask Brian about it, and if, if you want
We'll, we'll get together on that going forward.
Yeah, if you want, if you want him to come and talk to us about it, I'll make the arrangements for it, to get him on the agenda.
Excellent, thank you, Mary Lou.
Alright.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, yep, you're welcome.
Do you have anything under other? No, okay.
I wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas, and absolutely healthy and Happy New Year.
Thank you, and same to you and everybody, everybody, yeah.
Thank you, Nancy.
Stay warm.
And dry.
And dry.
Yeah, I just had, I had just a suggestion. Um, do you think that maybe on the agenda, we could put old business in the future, so we, we could have an opportunity to just revisit some things that maybe need to be finished up?
I think that's a great idea, I thought we had that on the
On this one, it isn't there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Was thinking about it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Um.
Has nothing to do with, um, the, the, this board or anything, but it's just something very, very nice that happened, that happened to me today. Um, I had to go to the supermarket to pick up free things that I wasn't, two of which I wasn't able to get yesterday when I went. And, um, I went to a different supermarket, but I, I, I was in this big long line to check out, you know, the, the express lines at the supermarket, there was this man, a young man in front of me, and he was holding all these bags of like potatoes and onions and stuff, very, it was all heavy, I'm sure he expected to walk right up and go right through the express line, but that express line had about fifteen people in it, okay, so he was holding, and I could see him, and I said to him, why don't you put your things in the basket, cause I had my stuff on the top of the basket, and I said, why don't you put your things in the basket, he said, oh, thank you, but I think I'm okay, then he almost dropped some of the things, and he went, oops, and he picked them up, and then he said, I think, second thought, I think I will, I'll put them in the basket, so I just, um, you know, followed him, he was right in front of me. When he got to the cashier, he said, see those three things up at the top of the basket, I wanna pay for those. So, check those out, check those out first, and he paid for my free things that I bought at the grocery store. I mean, I said, you know
The spirit of Christmas.
I, that's why I'm telling it, the spirit of Christmas, that's the only reason I'm telling this, but it was so it made me feel so good, you know, I mean, we're a nice thing to do, you know, so, uh
I love to hear things like that.
I know, that's why I told you, cause I, I just, it's such a nice story, I think, you know, so anyway, that happened to me today.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
Thank you, yeah, that was a very nice story.
Very nice.
January eleventh?
Okay. Wow, okay, it's early in January, huh?
It feels early, cause
It does, because this, yeah, this is so late, yeah, I know, yeah, okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have unfinished business with you, Lee, I'll call you tomorrow.
You have a motion from Laurel to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Jan, any, any opposed? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
From Santa, we get that.